Good morning. Thank you for attending the I-81 Viaduct Project Public Hearing. This is Aileen McGuire, and I will be serving as the host for this virtual hearing. Prior to the presentation, I will go over some general information on how to participate in the virtual hearing. Today's event will be conducted in English. Interpretation is available for anyone who wishes to hear the event in Spanish. To listen to interpretation on a computer, locate the globe icon along the bottom row of your Zoom screen and select the language. If you are joining via Zoom, the Zoom app on a mobile device, click More or the three dots in the corner of your screen, select Language Interpretation, and then choose your language and click Done. These instructions will now be read in Spanish.
El evento de hoy se llevará a cabo en inglés con interpretación al español. Para escuchar la interpretación en su computadora, haga clic en el icono del globo terráqueo en la parte inferior de la pantalla de Zoom y seleccione Español. Si se está uniendo a través de una aplicación Zoom en un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en More, más, o en los tres puntos en la esquina de la pantalla. Seleccione Language Interpretation, Interpretación del idioma. Luego, elija Español y haga clic en Done, finalizado.
The hearing moderator will be facilitating the hearing. A formal presentation will be followed by oral testimony. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be muted if they use inappropriate language. Substantive comments will be responded to in the final environmental impact statement. This hearing is being livestreamed and recorded. The official transcript of the hearing will become part of the project record. If you are watching the livestream and would like to comment, visit the project website, to register and receive a link to join the hearing. I will now review the instructions on how to participate in the hearing. This is also available on the project website and will be reviewed again at the start of the comment period. If you have questions about the webinar technology, use the chat box to send a message to the host and receive a written response. Do not send comments through the chat, as they will not be included in the project record. If you would like to comment, please use the raised hand function or press *9 on your phone to alert the host that you would like to comment. On mobile devices, you may need to click the three dots to access more features. When you are called on to speak, the host will give you permission to unmute yourself so all participants can hear you. If you log in by computer or the Zoom app, you will receive a notification to unmute. Speaker icons are located in the top left of Android and iOS devices. If you are dialing in by phone, when the moderator calls on you to speak, press *6 to unmute and press *6 again to mute when you are done speaking. I will now turn over today's event to the hearing moderator, Brody Smith.
Shall we begin? Okay. Good morning. On behalf of Marie Teres Dominguez, the Commissioner of the New York State Department of Transportation, and Rick Markey, the Administrator of the Federal Highway Administration's New York Division, I welcome you to this I-81 Viaduct Project Public Hearing. My name is Brody Smith. I am serving as the moderator for this public hearing. A stenographer will record the proceedings of this meeting and a verbatim written transcript. I'm going to read an opening statement, which will be followed by a brief pre-recorded presentation. When the presentation is finished, I will begin the moderated oral comment session. If you are watching the livestream and would like to provide a verbal comment, visit the project website at www.i81.dot新y.gov to register and receive a link to join the hearing. The New York State Department of Transportation, in cooperation with the Federal Highway Administration, published a draft design report/draft environmental impact statement/draft Section 4F evaluation for the I-81 Viaduct Project on July 16, 2021. The project has been advanced in accordance with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, codified as 40 CFR Parts 1500 through 1508, the FHWA Environmental Impact and Related Procedures, Final Rule 23 CFR Part 771, and the New York State DOT Procedures for Implementation of the State Environmental Quality Review Act at 17 New York Code's Rules and Regulations, Part 15, and in accordance with the provisions of Article 2 of the New York State Eminent Domain Procedure Law. The publication of the DDR/DEIS began the public comment period on the document, which will extend until 5:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time on September 14, 2021. This public hearing is being conducted to obtain comments on the project's DDR/DEIS and the right-of-way acquisition process. The DDR/DEIS is available for review at this hearing on the project's website, and at libraries and other public facilities throughout greater Syracuse. The DDR/DEIS describes the project, the consideration of social, economic, and environmental effects that would result from the implementation of the project and measures to mitigate adverse effects. The hearing provides the public an opportunity to make formal statements of positions before any project decisions are made. The agencies will review and consider public comments submitted during the established 60-day public comment period. Responses to substantive comments will be included in the project's final design report, final environmental impact statement, which is FEIS, which is anticipated to be published by the end of 2021. In addition to comments made at the public hearings, comments will be accepted in the following ways. One, written comments sent via US mail to Mark Frichette, PE, Project Director, New York State Department of Transportation, Region 3, 333 East Washington Street, Syracuse, New York, 13202, or Rick Markey, Division Administrator, Federal Highway Administration, Leo W. O'Brien Federal Building, 11A, Clinton Avenue, Suite 719, Albany, New York, 12207. Electronic comment in forms via the project website are available at www.i81.dot新y.gov. You may email at i81opportunities@dotnew.gov or you may use a telephone voicemail system through the project hotline, which can be found at 1-855-I81TALK. That's 855-481-8255. Information on how to submit written comments is also outlined on the project website. You can elect to submit comments both orally and in writing. Written statements will be given the same weight and consideration as oral statements made at this meeting. Again, New York State DOT and the Federal Highway Administration will accept public comments until 5:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time on September 14, 2021. Before we begin accepting oral comments from participants, we will play a pre-recorded presentation on the project. After the presentation, I will give you instructions on how we plan to take your oral comments.
Welcome to the public hearing for the Interstate 81 or I-81 Viaduct Project Draft Environmental Impact Statement, or DEIS. The public hearing is an opportunity for the public to provide oral testimony on the DEIS. This public hearing will satisfy New York's eminent domain procedure law, or EDPL, public hearing requirements. The New York State Department of Transportation, or NYSDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, published the project's DEIS on July 16, 2021. This date also marks the start of the DEIS public comment period, which will be open for 60 days through 5:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time on September 14, 2021. The document is available for review on our project website, as well as at local libraries and town halls throughout metropolitan Syracuse. The DEIS documents the evaluation of the project's reasonable alternatives and the social, economic, and environmental effects that would result from the implementation of the alternatives. The following three alternatives were evaluated in the DEIS: the no-build, the viaduct alternative, and the community grid alternative. The no-build alternative serves as the baseline against which the build alternatives are compared. The two build alternatives are the viaduct alternative, which would replace the existing I-81 viaduct with a new viaduct built to current design standards, and the community grid alternative, which would remove the viaduct from the railway bridge near Renwick Avenue to Interstate 690, or I-690, replace it with a city street, and disperse traffic throughout the city street grid. I-81 would be rerouted to Interstate 481, or I-481, under the community grid alternative. NYSDOT has identified the community grid alternative as the preferred alternative because it best meets the project's purpose, objectives, and needs. The project area is located within the municipalities of Syracuse, North Syracuse, Cicero, East Syracuse, and DeWitt in Anandaga County, and it includes portions of I-81, I-690, and I-481. This area includes the southern and northern interchanges of I-81 with I-481, Exit 16A and 29 respectively, the portion of I-81 between approximately East Brighton Avenue and .7 miles north of Hiawatha Boulevard, including the I-81 viaduct, and the I-81-I-690 interchange in downtown Syracuse, the portions of I-690 between Leavenworth Street and Beach Street, and between approximately Hiawatha Boulevard West and Bear Street, and I-481 between New York State Route 5 and the New York State Thruway, I-90. The purpose of the project is to address structural deficiencies and non-standard highway features, while creating an improved transportation corridor through the city of Syracuse that meets the transportation needs and provides the infrastructure to support long-range transportation planning efforts. The project is needed to improve traffic flow and safety and to address aging infrastructure. There is also a need for transportation infrastructure to support long-range planning efforts, to improve pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and to improve transit amenities. Based on a balanced consideration of the need for safe and efficient transportation, the social, economic, and environmental effects of the project alternatives, and national, state, and local environmental protection goals, the NYSDOT and FHWA have identified the community grid alternative as the project's preferred alternative. The community grid alternative would remove the I-81 viaduct, which is recognized in city of Syracuse and Anandaga County land use plans as a physical and visual barrier between neighborhoods. The portion of existing I-81 between its northern and southern intersections with I-481 would be redesignated as a business loop of I-81. What is a business loop? According to the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, a business route is "a route principally within the corporate limits of a city, which provides the traveling public an opportunity to travel through that city." A business loop is a route that leads into a downtown business district and returns to the freeway at the other end. Business Loop 81, or BL81, would continue to be a high-speed roadway south of MLK Junior East and north of I-690. The community grid alternative includes multiple improvements to help disperse traffic and improve access to and from key destinations within downtown Syracuse. For example, the addition of the I-690 interchange at Kraus and Irving Avenues would create a new point of access to University Hill. Removal of the elevated West Street overpass and ramps to and from I-690 would reestablish connectivity between downtown and the near west side. The alternative also includes a new northbound exit from BL81 to Colvin Street to provide a direct link from the south to University Hill. The community grid alternative would create the potential for a canal district, offering opportunities for new and enhanced public spaces as a result of the removal of transportation infrastructure associated with I-81 and its interchanges. The removal of transportation infrastructure would also allow for the creation of new gateways to neighborhoods, including MLK Junior East, where a roundabout would be built, and at Van Buren Street. The removal of infrastructure in the West Street area would allow for the creation of a new path along the west bank of Anandaga Creek, between Erie Boulevard and Evan Street, providing access to views, which are currently obstructed, of a historic Erie Canal aqueduct and stone bridge over the creek. Improvements to BL81 and I-690 would be made to increase capacity and improve traffic operations. These include a new lane added to the northern segment of BL81 from I-690 to Hiawatha Boulevard, new on-and-off ramps at Bear Street, and reconstruction of I-690 from Leavenworth Avenue to Beach Street. The community grid alternative would improve key connections between neighborhoods and key destinations and introduce a host of bicycle and pedestrian amenities, including wider sidewalks, cycle tracks, and shared use, or bicycle and pedestrian paths, curb bumpouts to reduce pedestrian crossing distance, and landscaped medians for pedestrian refuge. These features would improve mobility and accessibility for pedestrians and cyclists, including the elderly and transit users. The community grid alternative would remove the viaduct and reconstruct Almond Street as a signalized city street for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and enhance neighborhood connectivity. The build alternatives would include improvements to Wilson Park. During construction, the contractor could use a .12-acre portion of this 2.1-acre park, which is adjacent to and beneath the I-81 viaduct for construction staging. To protect the public during construction, NYSDOT would close the sidewalk, as well as an adjacent piece of parkland, and provide a temporary walkway with adequate space and protection from construction. NYSDOT will require the contractor to secure access to the restricted area to protect public safety. The park currently has two basketball courts, and two courts will be maintained during construction. After construction, the park would have three courts, benches, new shade trees, a new water fountain in the basketball court area, new pavement for access from Jackson Street, and new fences, a graded and reseeded lawn area, pedestrian gates, and parking improvements. These improvements were developed in coordination with the city and the Parks Department, as well as Syracuse Housing Authority. The community grid would reconstruct portions of I-481, which would be designated as the new I-81, and brought up to current interstate design standards. Improvements include adding lanes where needed between I-690 and I-90. The new northbound I-81 would be expanded from two to three lanes. Between Kirkville Road and I-690, the new southbound I-81 would be expanded from two to three lanes. The project would also reconfigure the southern and northern interchanges with I-81 and make various improvements to Interchange 3 and New York State Routes 5 and 92. The Interchange 3 improvements were developed as a result of public comments, as was the new design for the southern interchange. Neither build alternative would adversely affect air quality. NYSDOT is proposing to construct 15 noise barriers under either build alternative to obey traffic noise impacts. By removing the viaduct, the community grid alternative would allow daylighting of areas that are currently cast in shadows and would create extended views to surrounding areas, resulting in beneficial visual effects. The community grid alternative's impacts to wetlands and other habitats would be mitigated through measures such as stream, culvert, and flood plan restoration. The community grid alternative would also address climate change with the construction of a new storm sewer trunk line, which would provide increased capacity for stormwater and reduce the load on the city's combined sewer system. The community grid alternative would require acquisition of four commercial buildings. No residential or historic buildings would be acquired. The viaduct alternative would require the acquisition of 24 commercial and residential buildings, including 11 historic buildings. The beneficial and adverse effects of the project would be fairly distributed within the affected environmental justice and non-environmental justice communities. FHWA and NYSDOT conducted a detailed economic study to investigate the potential effects on businesses of traffic rerouting under the community grid alternative. The study found that changes in traffic under the community grid alternative would have only a small effect on highway-dependent businesses along I-81 north of downtown Syracuse. Many of these businesses, like Destiny USA and Hotels, are somewhat resilient to changes in traffic because they are planned destinations for travelers rather than spontaneous stops along the way. The study also found that differences in travel times would not substantively alter local consumer behavior. The community grid would result in approximately 10 to 12-point acres of surplus property, depending on how much land would be needed to accommodate the highway, sidewalk, shared use, bicycle and pedestrian path, and other transportation features. NYSDOT will determine the size and location of the surplus transportation right-of-way parcels once construction is complete. NYSDOT will form a land-use working group consisting of representatives from the city, the city school district, economic development and economic opportunity organizations, the business community, environmental justice communities, neighborhood residents, and other organizations and stakeholders as appropriate to provide input to NYSDOT in establishing a framework for the non-transportation use of each potential surplus parcel. The viaduct alternative would not result in surplus property. Construction of the viaduct alternative would take six years and would cost $2.2 billion, whereas the community grid alternative would take five years and would cost $1.9 billion. To mitigate the adverse effects of construction activities on the community, NYSDOT will require its contractors to comply with measures to minimize or otherwise mitigate effects. These measures will address traffic diversions, dust and debris, increase in emissions and noise, and access to businesses and residences. There will be community engagement throughout construction. Together, these measures would help reduce adverse effects during the construction period. The community grid alternative would require the acquisition of four commercial buildings, as well as portions of land from approximately 140 commercial and residential properties. The majority of property acquisitions would be within the city of Syracuse, with the remaining acquisitions occurring in the towns of Cicero and DeWitt. NYSDOT's Office of Right-of-Way would acquire real estate needed for the project in accordance with the eminent domain procedure law. The acquisition process will follow five steps, which include: One, contacting the property owner to schedule a property inspection at the owner's convenience. During the property inspection, the department will provide the owner with a copy of the acquisition map, informational packets, and encourage owner involvement. Two, appraising the property to determine just compensation due to the property owner. Three, making an offer of compensation of the fully approved value, either in person or by certified mail. Four, legally acquiring the property, which occurs once the acquisition map is filed with the county clerk's office. And five, paying the property owner. If a property acquisition requires relocation of businesses or residences, NYSDOT's Office of Right-of-Way will work with the occupants to make their relocation as accommodating as practical. The relocation assistance program includes moving and re-establishment expenses or a payment in lieu of moving expenses. To be eligible for relocation benefits, owners must complete negotiations with the Office of Right-of-Way prior to moving. No side occupants will be required to move without at least 90 days' written notice. Informational booklets on the property acquisition and relocation processes, including contact information should you have questions, are available at the project's virtual information room and at the in-person meeting at the ON Center. Identifying the job skills needed on large projects like I-81 and providing the job readiness and training for those jobs is ongoing. NYSDOT's goal is to have a local workforce ready to work when the project starts. NYSDOT has partnered with the New York State Department of Labor to create the Workforce Forward Syracuse Program. This program would help train and connect local workers with the jobs that would be involved with the I-81 project. NYSDOT has a program running at SUNY Educational Opportunity Center, EOC, called Work Smart New York, that helps give local residents the skills they need to work on DOT construction projects. We also have been collaborating with the city of Syracuse and Syracuse Build on the new pathways to apprenticeship in an effort to give local residents training in construction skills. NYSDOT continues to work with the community to develop a local hiring goal through the FHWA SEP-14 application. This application would ensure that members of the local community have the greatest opportunity to work directly on the I-81 project. We will have both virtual and in-person hearings where individuals can provide oral comments. Both hearings will be livestreamed on the project's YouTube page. The virtual hearing will take place on August 17 at 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. ET. Attendees of the virtual hearing can request to submit oral comments when they register for the hearing via Zoom. The in-person hearing will take place on August 18 at the ON Center from 3:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Attendees of the in-person hearing can provide oral comments to the audience or dictate them privately to a stenographer. You may also submit your comments in writing via the project website, www.i81opportunities.org, or by writing to us via regular mail. In addition, you may call our project hotline and leave your comment as a voice message. Please note that all comments received, whether orally or in writing, electronically or in person, will be given an equal level of consideration. We want to emphasize the importance of the public's feedback and encourage you to submit your comments and questions. We look forward to hearing from you. To learn more about the alternatives and the project effects, please visit our virtual information room. The room contains display boards, presentations, and videos about the project. Thank you for watching this presentation, and please continue to participate. and please continue to participate in the I-81 Viaduct Project.
Just want to remind everyone before we continue with the hearing that if you have questions about the webinar technology, to please use the chat box to send a message. But we will not be responding to substantive comments about the project through the chat. That will be done through the DEIS. Thank you.
I will now introduce representatives of the New York State DOT and the Federal Highway Administration who are in attendance for today's hearing. Mark Frichette, Project Director, New York State Department of Transportation; Rick Markey, Division Administrator, Federal Highway Administration; Jared Gross, Area Engineer, Federal Highway Administration; Maria Chow, Senior Planner, Federal Highway Administration. The panelists, hearing officer, and ASL interpreter will be visible on screen during the oral testimony. Although you may not see all the panelists on screen at one time, all of the panelists will be listening to the testimony. My role here as the hearing moderator is to provide members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in an organized, fair, professional, and orderly manner. The testimony is being recorded by a stenographer, so please state and spell your name and identify any organization you represent. To ensure that all are heard, comments will be limited to three minutes after the introduction. There will be a countdown clock on the screen, and I will provide verbal warnings when only thirty seconds remain. Agency representatives will not be answering questions or responding to comments during the hearing. Responses to substantive comments will be included in the final design report slash final environmental impact statement. If you are watching the livestream and would like to comment, visit the project website at www.i81.dot.ny.gov to register and receive a link to join the hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize elected officials or the representatives who are in attendance. Ben Walsh, the City of Syracuse Mayor; Rachel May, New York State Senator, District 53; Carney David, Town of Salina, Fourth Ward Councillor; Kevin McCormick, Town of Skinny Atlas Councillor; Carrie Mannion, Town of DeWitt, Deputy Supervisor; and Mark Tucker, Town of Skinny Atlas, Councillor. At this time, we will hear from those who wish to make oral statements. I remind you that if you would like to comment, please use the Raise Your Hand function or press *9 if participating by phone. In accordance with agency policy, elected and appointed officials will be given the first opportunity to speak. Others will be called to make their statements in the order that they are listed in the queue. I will call two names at a time, so you are prepared when it is your turn to speak. I apologize in advance to anyone whose name I mispronounce. Our first speaker will be Ben Walsh, Mayor of the City of Syracuse; and our second speaker will be Carrie Mannion from the town of DeWitt.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. The Community Grid is the right alternative for Syracuse, Central New York, and all of New York State. While there are still elements of the project that must be improved, that fact remains clear. I want to thank the DOT for thoroughly studying the options for this project. With the community, the DOT is seizing the transformational moment before us and creating the best framework to correct the historical wrongs that hurt city residents. I also want to thank the DOT for addressing the comments and concerns it has received during the process. That work of listening and responding must continue. My team and I are reviewing the DEIS. We are talking with key stakeholders attending community meetings and working with the DOT. We will file detailed written comments as part of this process. Today, let me cover four points. First, my greatest concern has been and continues to be for the people who live closest to the viaduct. They have borne the biggest burden, and their neighborhoods must be protected and invested in. I'm concerned about the current design and position of the roundabout at STEAM at Dr. King School. We cannot put our children at risk for decades to come. I request that you listen to the concerns on this critical element of the project and present alternative solutions in the final environmental impact statement. The roundabout is one key concern, but not the only one. The DOT must deliver a comprehensive approach that addresses pedestrian, bicycle, public transit, and parks amenities. Mitigating health and construction impacts are critically important. As I noted earlier, the city will provide written comments on other areas of concern regarding the project impact in city neighborhoods. Second, I appreciate the DOT's inclusion of a land-use working group for surplus land that will become available as a result of this project. This group must include the city, the school district, neighborhood representatives, environmental justice communities, economic opportunity and development organizations, and other stakeholders. Land use is a priority concern for the city and its residents, so there must be local control of decision-making regarding surplus land. Third, I challenge the state to aim high on local hiring. The city and DOT has worked well together in planning to ensure city residents, especially women, people of color, and veterans, get equitable opportunities for jobs and careers from the project. The most critical stages are happening now, and I urge the state to set aggressive goals in its application to the Federal Highway Administration for local hiring and commit to even more aggressive programs to train and prepare city workers. Fourth, I commend the DOT for addressing concerns of our suburban neighbors, including through the economic analysis of northern suburbs and the proposed improvements to Exit 3 on Interstate 81 and Linden Corners to the east. I urge you to continue to address these concerns, especially to the north and south of the city where we have opportunity to reduce traffic problems that have long concerned those communities. In closing, we know the pandemic continues to create uncertainty. The DOT set up a process to ensure everyone can participate. To my fellow city residents and all of Central New York, please ensure you are heard. Thank you.
Will be Carrie Mannion from DeWitt, followed by Carrie Mannion will be Jackson Hurst.
Good morning, DOT. Thank you. Thank you so much. I still haven't got my comments ready yet, but I just wanted to... So I mentioned on there that I was undecided, but I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak, but I'll be speaking up later. I'd like to go to the live meeting tomorrow to see the effects of the traffic on Jamesville, DeWitt, and the Syracuse, and how you're handling that. But again, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and thanks. Thank you so much for having so many presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mannion. Next up is Jackson Hurst, followed by Quing Yang Lu. Okay, we're going to come back to them. Let's see. The next up will be... Andrew Schuster.
Hi, my name is Andrew Schuster. I'm a principal at Ashley McGraw Architects in Syracuse, New York, as well as president-elect of the AICNY. Speaking of my capacity as a principal at Ashley McGraw Architects, we are a downtown employer. We've been based in downtown Syracuse for over thirty years, and we rely on the vibrancy of downtown Syracuse to attract and retain talent. We're a very specialized architecture firm. We work... We require the need to hire very specific skilled workers, and we often relocate them from other communities. And whether Syracuse, downtown Syracuse is healthy is a very important criteria in hiring those people. We feel that the Community Grid is absolutely the best way to ensure that that vibrancy continues and grows and maintains the momentum in Central New York that is currently occurring. We also support the Community Grid on the premise that it will take less time to construct, which will be positive for all businesses in all communities associated with I-81. We do have a couple of concerns that we'd like to put on the record. We'd like to encourage the DOT to design the street as a urban thoroughfare that allows for a street wall to be built with buildings to form a street wall on either side. And to do that, we would like to see options with a narrower right-of-way. The current 197-foot right-of-way seems out of character for an urban right-of-way, and we feel that the same service can be provided in less than 120 feet. We also would like to see more information on how the land is going to be returned to the community. I was very encouraged to see that included in today's presentation. We feel that the park-like spaces shown in the DOT renderings do not provide a context that will encourage pedestrian flow between the Central Business District and Upstate University, and that further urban-style development and urban streetscapes will encourage a positive connection between the two communities. We also are confident that this will increase the city's tax base and the county's tax base in a constructive way. So that concludes my statements at this time. We'll submit further written comments.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Next up is Brian Sampson, followed by Michael Born.
Good morning. My name is Brian Sampson. I'm president of Associated Builders and Contractors Empire State Chapter. We represent about four hundred contractors across the state of New York and well over a hundred right in the central New York region. We're commenting today just to give our support for the I-81 project. We think it's long overdue, and it will be good for the Syracuse community to have that. We also support the use of local hiring. We believe that there are a number of skilled crafts workers in the region that can work on that project. And in fact, I think DOT probably realizes that about eighty percent of the work that's being done in the central New York region right now currently is being performed by what are considered open-shop contractors. So those that choose not to be signatory to a union collective bargaining agreement with the implications of a project labor agreement, the local hiring requirements are going to be tough to meet because, as people know with PLAs, there are requirements that a certain percentage of the local workforce has to come from the local union hall. As a result, open-shop contractors don't typically bid project labor agreements because they can't put their own workers on the job. So as DOT looks to advance this plan, we would strongly ask them to not put the project labor agreement on this project because it will decrease your bidding. It will decrease local hiring, and it will create different challenges. Further, this may seem strange for us to take this position. Project labor agreements are often justified on the backs of the workers. So there are savings in there that the workers have to concede in order to make these projects go forward. We don't believe that that's the right approach. Most of the PLA studies that we see have false savings and false narratives. For example, the study will claim that there's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, to be saved by non-union contractors using union apprentices. What happens when you have no non-union contractors bidding that work? They won't use union apprentices. Therefore, those are false savings. There's also a management rights section. If no non-union contractors bid the work, there is no management savings to be had because there are no work conflicts, no jurisdictional issues to be resolved. Those tend to be the two biggest cost savings for a PLA. So we would strongly ask you to not use a PLA on this project. Further, we would ask that if that is something you are going to consider, ask you to think about this. The individual workers on those projects are making concessions, but the union business agents and other management are not. That is not fair to the workers, and it's something that should be strongly discouraged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Next up is Michael Born, followed by Minch Lewis.
Michael Bohm, you should have accessed unmute yourself.
Okay, we'll try to come back to Mr. Bohm. Next up is Minch Lewis.
Thank you. I now have the unmute button. So my name is Minchen Lewis. I live at 205 Regai Avenue in the city of Syracuse. I teach metropolitan government and politics at Syracuse University's Maxwell School. I also served for nine years as the elected Syracuse City Auditor. I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this once-in-a-lifetime decision for the future of our community. I particularly appreciate the comments made by both Senator Schumer and Secretary Buttigieg when they were here in Syracuse. They both said that the project would undergo changes going forward. So I am requesting an important change. I am requesting that the DOT extend the comment period for an additional six months. I have several reasons for this request. First, the length of the DEIS, 28,000 pages with thousands of details. It requires many, many hours of study just to understand the elements. Second, the DEIS contains new features that were not included in the preliminary DEIS. They require analysis and community input. For instance, the roundabout at Dr. King Elementary School, the new exits at Calvin, and the extended entrance exit at Glen Avenue. The changes to I-481 that may impact the environment. And there are untold details, like the changes in alternative V4 of the exit from northbound I-81 to eastbound I-690 from a right-hand to a left-hand exit. Third, there are many changes in the community. The traffic has changed significantly with the recent two Amazon facilities and additional prospective development. The community needs more time to determine how these changes will impact the DEIS. The social and economic impacts of the community for the neighborhood and for the community in general need to be evaluated. Then, there are several groups that are exploring alternatives that could achieve all of the goals of the Community Grid that you've outlined and maintain the economic vitality of the region, bringing a true consensus to support this major public project. Fourth, there are external changes also. Leadership in Albany is changing. It's in transition. We are still in the middle of a very serious global pandemic. And finally, the new world of technology is changing, and it requires time to adjust to those changes, just as we saw at the beginning of this webinar with the startup technical difficulties. For all of these reasons, all of this requires more time, and I urge DOT to extend the comment period for at least six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next up to speak is Fred Wagner, followed by Alan Geller-Roloff.
Good morning. Can I be heard well?
I can hear you.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon. I'm Fred Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R, a former chief counsel of the Federal Highway Administration, and I have the honor of representing Carol Sol Center Company, Destiny USA. To begin, we reiterate and support comments like we just heard requesting an extension of the comment period. The sheer volume and complexity of the materials released by NICE dot does not make the comment period fair or reasonable. If the agency wants a true dialogue with all stakeholders, more time is... If the agency wants a true dialogue with all stakeholders, more time is simply needed. To the merits, it's apparent that the agency is intent on advancing the so-called community grid concept without a fair consideration of other options. If the heart of NEPA is a fair analysis of a full range of reasonable alternatives, this document fails at that legal obligation. There have been many and persistent calls for an alternative that could both preserve safe, high-speed mobility and reconnect communities. On that option deserves a fair review, yet public statements by the agency have discounted that option without adequate consideration. Without an analysis of full and a reasonable range of feasible alternatives, the NICE dot draft EIS is arbitrary and capricious. Even based on the very limited time we've had so far to review the enormous amount of information in the document, NICE dot's analysis is flawed and erroneous. First of all, the traffic study is based on stale and outdated data. There's no sense of how the grid will impact key intersections outside the very narrow study area established by the agency as your graphics earlier demonstrated. The analysis presumes a growth rate that is completely inconsistent with recent data and dramatically understates the mobility performance of the grid option. It fails to address that only six percent of existing trips, based on the old data, are through trips that do not stop within the city or nearby destinations. It makes no sense to presume that a large portion of the ninety thousand average daily trips will drive sixteen miles out of the way on four eighty one. In addition, it fails to account for recent developments like the creation of the Amazon Distribution Center. We will be providing in our written comments a more formal critique of this traffic data, but it's enough to say now that the proposed action does not meet the main purpose of the project, improve mobility. In addition, the economic impact analysis is inadequate. Nobody from the state, nobody from FH should have consulted with my client, a large regional employment and commerce center, nor as far as we know with any other major businesses in and around the area. How can that create a fair economic impact assessment? And how can the conclusion that there would only be minor disruptions be supported as was stated earlier? From an air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, the EIS is flawed. The traffic analysis I mentioned before.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. That is three minutes. Next up scheduled to speak is Alan Geller-Roloff.
That's incorrect.
And Quing Yang Lu.
Good morning. Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Ellen Roloff and I'm a member of Temple Concord on the corner of University and Madison Street in Syracuse. As Jews, we are commanded by God to perform acts of Tikun Olam, loosely interpreted as healing the world. That is why I am speaking with you today. I have some concerns about the Route eighty one community grid, some of which have been mentioned earlier this morning. One, there is potential for negative environmental impacts on people who live, work, and study near the construction areas. Therefore, clear steps should be taken to ensure reduction of dust, water, air, and noise pollution. In addition, conducting a community health needs assessment before construction begins as well as a study to determine if the community grid will remain a major roadway would be desirable. Also, I'd like to see a plan to move the proposed access ramp to at least six hundred feet from the steam school at Dr. King Elementary. Two, I'm hoping that real economic benefits will be there for local residents and will be generated by this project. This would be achieved by requiring contractors to hire thirty percent people of color and thirty percent local residents, first from areas around the viaduct, then folks from the rest of the city. Three, I'd like to see minimal displacement of lower income residents by providing relocation assistance, support and funding, and recognition of a right to return. This would include providing market rate buyouts for existing homeowners and funding for reasonable moving costs. Also designating an eight to ten acre parcel of land just east of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard for development under the direction of a community land trust run by local communities of color would help to mitigate this disruption and dislocation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Geller-Roloff. Next up to speak is Quing Yang Lu and Michael Bohm. I would remind everyone to state and spell your name before you begin speaking.
Good morning. I want to make sure can anyone hear me correctly?
We can hear you fine.
Hi, everyone. My name is Qing Yang Liu. I'm currently a graduate student at Syracuse University. I'm living in the Madison Tower, which is next to the I eighty one highway. Thank you all for the comment and in the presentation. I want to raise my concern about this I eighty one project. First, I am concerned about the noise, air quality, and then the air pollution during the construction time, which can bring a lot to the damage to the residential area nearby the I eighty one, such as to the Mason Tower, Jefferson Tower, and also the Upstate Domitory. I do not see any current potential. I do not see any of this being mentioned in the presentation. I would want to see how the government agency can be acknowledged those potential negative effect to those residential area. Second, I'm concerned about the traffic change during the community. The potential removing of the current I eighty one next to the Madison Tower could be causing the traffic gen nearby the area such as the Almond Street and also going down to the Syracuse University. All of this has not been examined during the presentation. Third, I'm concerning about the current pandemic situation. I do not know how those uncertainty can be leading to the continuity of the project. Would the project being go through as the plan or would the project being halted due to the pandemic situation? And that will be all of my concern. Thank you so much for your hearing today.
Okay, we're going to return to Mr. Wagner. I think that he was cut off prematurely and he wanted to speak for another thirty seconds.
Yes, and thank you for recognizing that error. I want to say in closing that the project has laudable goals, but it is the wrong solution. Instead of a highway eighteen feet overhead in Syracuse, NICE dot will be building a highway at ground level. This cannot and does not advance any of the project objectives, especially those related to equity and social justice. We urge you to consider fully the Skyway Grid alternative in a fair and comprehensive way and listen to the citizens of Syracuse who want a modernized I eighty one, not just what certain people think. Thank you very much.
Next up to speak is Michael Bohm, followed by Constance Nyman.
Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me now? Thank you. Okay, I had a little problem with the other four. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Bohm, spelled correctly, B O M E. I'm a retired physical therapist. I live in Marietta, New York. And my statement or my question would be, what have these studies shown regarding the increase in commercial traffic exiting at Cortland, Prebo, Tully, or Lafayette, passing through Scott, Spafford, Tully, Marietta, and Skinny Atlas to get to the thruway west? If there is an increase in commercial traffic, do you have any plans to restrict the traffic or on these exits or rural routes? My other comment would be, we talk about safety. And I would question how many people have been killed walking or riding on the viaduct. My guess would be zero since it is illegal to do those two activities. However, people walking and biking on a grid will succumb to injuries and maybe die. And also, we may have an increase in fatalities on our rural roads as a result of, I anticipate, commercial traffic. The mayor should be well aware of this. He knows the area here in Marietta well. His families, family frequently walk these streets. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and I hope we make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bohm. Next up to speak is Constance Nyman, followed by Peter Sarver.
Constance Nyman, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Constance Nyman, N Y M A N. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you fine.
Thank you. I'm in favor of the community grid with improvements to the bus service and scheduling. I've lived in central New York twenty seven of the last fifty years and nine of them in Syracuse. I retired to Syracuse from Orlando, Florida because this is a great place to live and I want it to be livable as well. I represent Moving People, which is part of the Alliance of Communities Transforming Syracuse. Improved transportation has been the major mission for Moving People for nearly ten years. And we're not talking about cars and roads, rather Moving People advocates the best transportation for everyone. Moving People asked me to speak to one of its five major points. NYSDOT must work closely with Centro to get plan and design into our community grid the accommodations for buses and their riders for now and in the future when we expect that the bus rapid transit will be a reality. I feel strongly that as we make central New York a better place to live, we must make it better for all citizens. That means transportation in CNY, central New York, must be able to move all of us efficiently to our jobs. To make it a better place, we must also reduce our carbon footprint. Our public transportation system must be designed into the community grid as if people are really going to use it. A coordinated plan between Centro and the New York State DOT will move Syracuse toward this vision of livability. Thank you very much. Please support the community grid and recommend bus transit improvements.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Next up to speak is Peter Sarver, followed by Barry Gordon. I'd like to remind everyone to state and spell their name before they begin speaking.
My name is Peter Sarver. Sarver is S A R V E R. And I'm the convener of the Moving People Transportation Coalition, which includes some twenty organizations and hundreds of individuals who support the community grid as the I eighty one replacement. My purpose in speaking at this session this morning is to focus on jobs for local people as a priority. As the mayor suggested, we need to aim high. We specifically support the training and hiring of local residents that the Urban Jobs Task Force recommended for building equity in the construction trades, including a pro Syracuse version of the federal government's local higher program called SEP fourteen. That provides for training, hiring, and the CWA dash PWA PLA agreement on I eighty one. That includes unions and community representatives in decision-making on the implementation of the I eighty one plan. Moving People believe this is an important priority because social justice requires that chronically disabled disadvantaged, sorry, persons be made a priority with this huge infrastructure project. In closing, we've been working on this as a group for eight to ten years. And we would oppose any kind of extension of the comment period. Everyone's had more than enough time to digest and articulate various viewpoints. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. Next up is Barry Gordon, followed by Donald Dorr.
Hello, my name is Barry Gordon. That's B A R R Y G O R D O N. We have lived in Ananagga County since nineteen sixty nine and in the town of Y Sanders since nineteen seventy six. We feel a strong attachment to Syracuse and travel there multiple times each week. For the past two or three years, I have been a volunteer with the I eighty one project of the New York Civil Liberties Union. This project's efforts are directed towards assuring a just solution for the people of the South Side and surrounding neighborhoods in Syracuse. The highway replacement can be viewed as a matter of justice, environmental, and racial, and as an attempt to avoid a repeat of the unfair effects created when the original highway was built. The original highway construction, as well as concurrent urban renewal projects, combined to destroy the fifteenth ward community. Today and throughout this comment period, you will receive many specific comments such as concern about the unfortunate proposed location of the roundabout adjacent to Martin Luther King School. I prefer to focus on the broader picture in an effort to place many of those specific comments in context. In the past, the New York State Department of Transportation and other transportation I'm sorry for not having to move my cursor, and other transportation agencies across the country have primarily seen their role as providing for the movement of traffic. I hope this longstanding approach has evolved into an enlightened understanding that systems designed to move people have far ranging effects beyond transportation. For the decades of I eighty one's existence through Syracuse, the people, including ourselves, who have benefited most from the road's utility are the people who have suffered the least of its ill effects. And the people who have received the least utility from the road have borne the greatest burden of its negative effects. It is time to correct this imbalance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up to speak is Mr. Dorr, followed by David Carney.
Hi, my name is Don Dorr, Donald D O E R R. I'm a resident of the town of DeWitt and I work in the city of Syracuse. I think that right now it's a really big mistake if you go ahead with the community grid without looking at some of the alternatives. I've heard mention of a sky bridge. I go back and I started looking at, you know, the volumes and volumes of paper that you put in the DEIS. I'll tell you one thing I saw was I had comments that I gave back at Jamesville DeWitt High School almost five years ago, November, five years ago, and everything I said I went and read, and they're pretty much the same concern. The other thing I see is that you have in your appendix all the stakeholder and public meetings. You get down to the one that Senator John D. Francisco had at Henninger High School, and all you put there is events sponsored by others. There were hundreds of people at that. Mark Fressett was there, the director was there. There was a lot of politicians, community leaders, and every single problem that with this problem with the community grid that was was raised, none of them have been addressed. The whole key is to have a high-speed north-south alternative to keep in place of eighty one. Right now, I took a look at that video, the one where you're behind the wheel. That is absolutely atrocious. You're taking eighty one, you're slowing everything down to thirty miles an hour, and you're and it's I said this five years ago, and I'm going to say it again. You're taking an Erie Boulevard, you're plopping it down in the middle of the city. You have pollution, you have sound, you have all sorts of problems by doing that. Your main, the main purpose of eighty one of one of them is so that you could get in and out of Syracuse. That's one of the advantages of living in Syracuse is that we have that access. You're taking eighty one and turning it into an Erie Boulevard. You're not making it any safer. The if you look at Erie Boulevard right now, would you take Erie Boulevard into the city from the east or would you take six ninety? No, you hop on six ninety and it brings you right into the city, get off the exit and you're right downtown. The problem you have is right now that you have a chance to build consensus. The sky bridge or having some alternative of north-south traffic is really what you need to do. And and right now you can build consensus. Senator Schumer said there's consensus. There's not.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Read, read the hundreds, if not thousands of comments, directors. I mean, read all the stuff of the negative effects. You have not addressed any of all the communities from the West, the tractor trailers. You've not addressed that. And the other thing you haven't addressed, and this is crazy, is Destiny USA, the sixth largest mall in America. You get the prop, you get the sales tax revenue from that. Where does that go? To the city of Syracuse. Please open your eyes and give some more time and look at the other options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Next up to speak is David Carney, followed by Jackson Hurst.
All right. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you great.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is David Carney, D-A-V-I-D, C-A-R-N-I-E. I am the Thomas Salina Fourth Ward Counselor. So I am not in favor of the proposed community grid. I speak on behalf of the constituents I represent. I speak today regarding the Appendix D-2, the economic considerations in the DEIS. The market information, which has been used to this point in the decision-making process, has numerous pitfalls and shortcomings inherent in the data. There's out-of-date information. The labor force data used is from the 2000 U.S. Census. We just now have been released 2020 U.S. Census data that should be used. The current and forecasted employment conditions are irrelevant. One example is the new Amazon distribution center in Clay, 3.8 million square foot warehouse, one of the largest warehouses in the world. Number two, there's contradictory data. There's multiple sources that will develop different estimations, even though the estimates are for the same market. So one example is 81 North to Seventh North Street, which is my district. Currently, it's 6.5 miles on 81 North from 41 North to where the 81 business loop will begin. 6.5 miles. If you take 81 North, take the business loop to 81 South, back down to the Seventh North Street exit, it's an additional 13.5 miles longer. So the data is contradictory. Projections can differ on how conservative or liberal the estimators are in their interpretation of the raw data. Thirdly, there's a lack of applicability. The local study area data gathered and analyzed were established to assess locations to an overall metro area. So the study area is established to focus on potential induced growth, does not apply to suburban areas negatively impacting. In closing, I'll just say that when you look at data sources, require the use of both primary and secondary data. Primary data is data gathered specifically for the task at hand. It is the data obtained from a site inspection. I urge for primary data to be gathered by direct observation, explicit questioning of people and businesses that represent the areas impacted. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to your responses.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Next up is Jackson Hurst, followed by William Sanford. Can't hear you yet, Mr. Hurst.
Hi, my name is Jackson Hurst, J-A-C-K-S-O-N-H-U-R-S-T. And I highly approve and support NYSDOT's I-81 bid-up project. The alternatives that I strongly feel that NYSDOT should drop from consideration is the no-build alternative and the bid-up alternative. You should keep the, you should basically keep the community grid alternative. Now, with the community grid alternative, I support that. The other alternative that I highly support is the Skyway Bridge alternative. If nothing else, if there's so much community opposition to the community grid alternative, just go with the Skyway alternative, please. I understand about the community grid, how it is going to basically reduce pollution and noise by taking away, by taking away the physical effects of 81 through the 15th Ward.
Thank you, sir. Next up is William Sanford, followed by Charlene Tarver.
William Sanford, you should have the ability to unmute yourself.
Okay, we'll try to get back to Mr. Sanford in a moment if he's having some technical difficulties. Please let us know in the chat if you're still on the line. Next up on my list.
Did I just get on?
Oh, is that Mr. Sanford?
Yes.
Okay, you're up, sir.
Yeah, sorry for that. Thank you for having this public hearing. My name is William Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D. I grew up in the 15th Ward and saw what the devastation that was done to the neighborhoods there at that time. And I also served as the chairman of the county legislature from 1988 to 2001. And I was involved in seeing a sewer project that was going to really change the South Side and affect those people down there during my tenure, and the people stood up and moved against that. And so it didn't happen. And so here is another time that I would like to see the people on the South Side to be able to, you know, comment on this whole process. I just spent three weeks down there on the South Side, reacquainting myself with some of my old neighbors and also talking with many people, and they're clueless. They don't know what's, how this is going to affect them. And I think that there is a responsibility by the DOT to make sure that those folks have the information. And so the other concerns that I have, and just looking at this thing, is that there's going to be more traffic in those neighborhoods as it's all funneled through the city. And that's going to cause neighborhoods and the ability to be a neighborhood of having kids playing out there by the streets and, and all those things, as well as the, say, the environmental impact of, you know, all that exhaust and everything going into that area. And so I'm really worried about that. I'm not against the grid, but I think that we should probably have a hybrid type thing going on so that the people that want to just continue high speed through this area would be able to do that. And so the other thing is, is that we just got the census back and the city of Syracuse has grown. And the only one upstate that's done that, which is great. And so in the EIS, as far as I can find out, there isn't any accommodation for the growth. In fact, it's a diminution of growth, I think, or even maybe it's just even. So I think you better take a look at that again because it's going to be affecting those neighborhoods at that time. And so I appreciate, again, the time and the time that you all are putting in, and I hope that you'll take these comments into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford. Next up is Charlene Tarver, followed by Mary Cunningham.
Yes, this is Charlene Tarver. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you again to the New York State DOT for the work that you've done in convening this project and of course convening this public hearing. My name is Charlene Tarver, T-A-R-V, like Victor, E-E-E-R, excuse me, T-A-R-V-E-R. I am a resident of Syracuse. My family has resided in Syracuse for more than five decades. According to the 2010 census, Syracuse had the highest concentration of black and brown poverty in the nation. That coupled with the history of redlining in Syracuse and the further isolation and segregation enforced by the viaduct really leads me today to echo a number of the comments that have already been made regarding the need for local hiring and the emphasis in prioritizing establishing a land trust that would address some of the historic racial, social, economic, and environmental injustices that have been done and committed against African-Americans in the city of Syracuse. The city of Syracuse is actually ranked one of the worst, one of the top 10 worst places in the country for African-Americans to reside. This $1.9 to $2.2 billion project is an opportunity to address some of those economic issues and inequities. It has been stated, and also a report was created by the Urban Jobs Task Force and Legal Services of Central New York, which identified that of a number of the recent construction projects in Syracuse, 88% of those workers in construction are white, and a very low percentage of those are even from the city of Syracuse. The STEAM school, which is located right here at the base of the construction of the removal of I-81, the viaduct, those students are 80% black and 99% low-income. I think that it is very imperative that we give the community more time to review the 200, excuse me, the 28,000-page report that has come out so that the community can be better galvanized, that there be a stronger emphasis on hiring local and hiring African-Americans specifically, since they are the ones who are going to be most impacted. I think it is also imperative that we look at the environmental issues here, the placement of the construction site there at Wilson Park, and ensuring that our children are not further impacted.
Second's remaining.
That is one of the lowest-performing schools in the state of New York. And again, I think there is an opportunity here not only to integrate the community, but to further integrate culture and create a stronger sense of economic development and economic viability within the African-American community that was destructively impacted by the removal and the destruction of Ward 15. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Mary Cunningham, followed by Holland Gregg.
Hi, my name is Mary Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M. One of the causes of the deterioration of cities is when cities start to emphasize that they are places for parking lots and, and high-speed traffic and big trucks. And we really need to remember that cities are also places where there's people who are living in neighborhoods that we want to form. I want to remind people that all the streets in our city should be 30 mile-per-hour streets. There should not be any other streets in our city that are higher than that, certainly not near schools. And school, if you go down East Genesee Street, everybody slows down to 20 miles an hour for a high school. We should be slowing down to 20 miles per hour for the Martin Luther King's STEAM school. One, there should be no business loop or qualified highway going near that area along Almond Street, and particularly near the school. Lanes should be 11 feet to slow down traffic. If people have to take five more minutes to get from one place to another, from the north to the south, or the south to the north, I'm sorry, it's worth the health and the welfare of the people on the South Side who have been so punished by having I-81 raised in their middle. It, there should be no roundabout near MLK. As one person said, if there had been a roundabout there first, no one would have built a school there. So why would we now say, well, there's a school, let's build a roundabout. It's going to bring more traffic, more pollution, more noise, more distraction, and it's a barrier. We are taking down 81 to try and remediate a barrier that made us a segregated city. Putting a roundabout in that area, it could go up at West Street and Fayette, it could go down at Brighton Ave, so that it is not a barrier, nor does it then concentrate traffic in a roundabout right by school where there's preschoolers, kindergarten, young children. And their, their kids don't watch traffic the way we would like them to, so that it is just murder waiting to happen. It is dangerous. The last thing I guess I want to-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Yep. The last thing I want to encourage is that when we talk about local hire, we think about local hire from the 15th Ward and 19th Ward where it's been most impacted by the construction of I-81, that we don't think it's county so much as we see city and the local South Side for training and hiring. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up to speak is Holland Gregg, followed by Dara Hobbs.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Holly.
Hey, thank you. First of all, thank you all for conducting this Zoom meeting. It's going very well, even with the technical issues. My name is Holland Gregg. First name is H-O-L-L-A-N-D. Last name is Greg, G-R-E-G-G. I'm a resident of Skinny Atlas, and I'm the executive director of a preservation group here called The Citizens to Preserve the Character of Skinny Atlas. I have sent my comments in via email, and so I'm assuming those are on the record, and so I would just like to summarize those. First of all, I do believe that the city of Syracuse does need an update to its cityscape, and so many good reasons have been articulated today. Our concerns are about the traffic study that the state has conducted. There's great nervousness about the, the way those traffic studies were calculated. And what I'm hoping is that I've heard enough noise about the calculations that I'm hoping that the state would entertain the idea of having some objective traffic experts come in and comment about those calculations and to really kick them around together in a constructive way to make sure that the calculations are accurate. The one thing that could be a disaster is if they've been underscored or if they've been, if the counts have been too low, because we'll never get a chance to correct that. And so now would be the time. Our other concern is for the communities to the east and north of Syracuse and all of the traffic that's going to impact there. Again, I've outlined this in my comments in writing. And then, as Mr. Bone said earlier, traffic coming through off Route 81, the design, as far as we can see, is the, the design of the new traffic pattern is going to really discourage members of the trucking industry, especially long-haul truckers coming up from the south and heading west to continue on and go through the city, go east, go north, and then come back west. This is going to have a negative impact on all of the communities, not just Skinny Atlas. This is not a Skinny Atlas problem. This is a Cortland problem, an Ithaca problem, an Aurora problem. In other words, this community grid design is going to impact all of central New York. And a lot of us are very, very nervous about this. And what I'm hoping is that the state will adopt regulations that are enforceable to keep the trucks on the highways and not allow them to cut off and cut through the back roads, which all we can see is more traffic over the 250 trucks that come through every single day. And then the Amazon outlet too is going to have an impact. So thank you very much. You have my comments in writing, and I do appreciate it. Hope you will address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Next up is Adara Hobbs, followed by Peter King.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Adara Hobbs. Spelling is A-D-A-R-A, last name H-O-B-B-S. I'm a community member- a community member, lifelong resident of Syracuse, New York. I am also a teaching assistant at Brighton Academy, which is the feeder school for Dr. King. And I would just like to address my concern with the racial and economic disparities that will take place when this project is in effect. First and foremost, I really am concerned about the displacement of this community. I lived in McKinley Manor as a child. A lot of my family members still reside in these neighborhoods, and my concern is primarily the access to different areas and even opportunities. A lot of these students who come up in this neighborhood have an opportunity to get an education at Syracuse University, like myself, at an extremely discounted or free rate because of their residence there. And I want to know what will be put in place to continue to create equity in this community. As we know, the bridge was built. It was a racialized incident when they destroyed the 15th Ward. And to my group, particularly my demographic, our biggest concern is how that will happen again and how this gentrification will affect this neighborhood. My students have lived in this area their whole life. Their grandparents have lived here. The Pioneer Homes is one of the oldest public housing buildings in the United States, one of the fifth oldest that's been here since 1940. There's whole communities that will be displaced. Their grandparents will be displaced. They, they will not have the strong community knit, which is very important in the black community. So I just, I have several concerns I would like to address. Furthermore, the roundabout at Dr. Martin Luther King School is completely unethical and unsafe for our students, you know, on the basis of traffic and speeding around that roundabout. My concern is that more of my children will die at that roundabout, as well as the pollution that will be caused with this project. I strongly encourage you guys as well to extend the period, the comment period from the community, because like someone else said, they are completely clueless. I think that the Department of Transportation should take some responsibility for informing these people on what really is going to happen and what the effects of this displacement will be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Peter King, followed by Kevin McCormick.
Hello?
Hello? I can hear you, sir.
Okay. The, I am Peter King, P E T R K I N G, and I have lived in Syracuse for 20 years. I am supporting project concerns expressed by Moving People Transport Coalition and the New York State Civil Liberties Union. I think health and safety concerns should be a priority for the 81 project. In general, the community grid option will likely improve public health concerns in Syracuse in the region largely by reducing traffic volumes and speed. However, I recommend a maximum speed of 30 miles an hour and 11 feet lanes along Business Loop 81 within the city, and also slowing and dispersing traffic from Martin Luther King East until the 41 South interchange. These measures will promote public health and safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and cyclists by palming traffic, and are more likely to reduce air pollution here. However, 81, DOT should not underestimate the air quality issues remaining in the city and especially on the south side, even after a grid conversion. Nobody has adequately studied air quality and its related effects in Syracuse, which are structural environmental justice concerns. DOT needs to examine the microclimate here and plan for reducing the air pollution overall and buffering its impact. For example, as is common along hilly terrain, the cold air likely drains each night from the university area and Oakwood Cemetery, blowing along 81 into the south side. On still days, atmospheric adversions can also occur, keeping pollutants recirculating in the valley. Keeping this microclimate in mind, the traffic between Martin Luther King East to the 481 South interchange should not remain a high-speed roadway, but should be dispersed along the street grid as much as possible. The public health impacts from the stretch can be reduced by including more road access to and from the south side and university, for example, like the proposed interchange at Colvin Street. DOT's planning for natural areas along the south side may be beneficial for air quality, but should be openly evaluated. Dust concern is especially considered, a concern in the city neighborhoods during the construction days and after. DOT should attend remediating heavy metals from the soils underneath the current viaduct and surrounding area for at least 100 feet. Existing techniques can do this efficiently without costing too much. DOT should use input from multiple sources, including experts, people's on-the-ground observations and knowledge, and technical measurements for air quality for monitoring the rebuild process and afterwards. DOT should rethink the roundabout currently planned for this, the Martin Luther King Junior intersection.
Thirty seconds.
As within this location is 600 feet of a busy roadway of a school. In general, that, that is also my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next up to speak is Kevin McCormick, followed by Woodruff Carroll.
Thank you. I'm Kevin McCormick. McCormick spelled M C C O R M A C K. I've lived in the town and village of Skinny Atlas for over 40 years, and I'm currently serving on the Town Board of Skinny Atlas. I'm here to echo, to a large extent, the comments of Mr. Gregg. I'm very concerned about the impact of the community grid plan on truck traffic exiting off of I-81 and coming north through the small towns and villages west of the city. We already have a significant problem with long-haul freight and garbage trucks traveling up, I've, I'm sorry, Route 41 and 41A along the lake, the Skinny Atlas Lake. In addition to the problems mentioned by Mr. Gregg, there's a danger of accidents, particularly in the winter. Anyone who's traveled at 41A in the winter will know how narrow it is, especially when there are storms. It's very dangerous. And our lake is a significant water supply for the city of Syracuse. Accidents occurring along those routes would be catastrophic for the water supply. The community grid plan will increase this traffic significantly and encourage more trucks to leave I-81. I'm asking the New York State Department of Transportation to consider mitigation methods to discourage trucks leaving I-81, perhaps speed limit signs, roundabouts, or other means of restricting traffic. Specifically, one issue I'd like to raise with the New York State DOT is trucks coming up Route 41A and exiting onto Route 20 in the village of Skinny Atlas. Extremely dangerous situation. We desperately need a real traffic light at that intersection, and we need, we need crosswalk markers to allow village residents to safely cross Route 20. I think that would be a very helpful improvement and would significantly reduce and help to discourage trucks from leaving I-81. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Next up is Woodruff Carroll, followed by Ronald Van Norstrand.
Oh, hi. I didn't, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Woody.
Okay, thank you. The concern I've been having as I look at this is, I don't see what consideration has been or what effect it will have on economic development in the city to go to this community grid approach. I was wondering if you could make us some comments on that.
Mr. Carroll, did you have more to say?
No, not at the moment. I just-
Oh.
I've heard every other possible issue addressed, but nobody's addressed anything to what it would do to for economic development in the city.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Next up is Ronald Van Norstrand, followed by Paul Zarzkowski.
Thank you. My name is Ron Van Norstrand. It's V as in Victor, A N N O R S T R A N D. I'm a resident of the city of Syracuse. I've lived here for over 38 years, and I'm a recently retired civil rights attorney. During my legal practice, many of my clients struggled with the numerous quality of life issues of having, of living in an environmental justice community. I implore the DOT to acknowledge and to take concrete action, actions to address the fact that these quality of life issues arose primarily from the destruction of, of the 15th Ward and the enabling of white flight to the suburbs caused in great part by the initial construction of I-81. Many people have addressed examples of concrete actions that can be taken. I would point out that it is imperative that you reserve an equitable percentage of I-81 demolition and construction jobs for Syracuse City residents, and that you use an independent compliance officer, which is a general practice in construction projects, to effectively monitor the local hiring goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Norstrand. At the summit, I'd like to remind the public that the DOT and Federal Highway Administration will not be extemporaneously answering questions during this call, but all of your comments are being carefully reported and will be responded to in due course as part of the final environmental impact statement. Next up is Paul Zarzkowski, followed by Megan Lee.
Good morning. Good afternoon. I'm sorry, it's quarter of one. So-
Hello, good afternoon, sir.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Thank you. So, a lot of the comments I've heard have been on truckers, and that I originally had submitted some maps to DOT via email on August 6, and it was looking at an alternative route for my 81 northbound going to I-90 westbound and vice versa for truck traffic. It seems right now there's an issue in Skinny Atlas, as well as there will be other issues for the business loop with truck traffic having to go westbound and southbound. I think the DOT should look at an alternative. I included a map of like Baltimore, Maryland, where they have a complete interstate that goes around the entire city of Baltimore. It could actually be tied back into Cicero, where the Amazon building, or excuse me, that's up in Clay. But having a basic interstate roundabout that would take basically 481 currently and basically mirror it right over 81 and create an interstate that goes around the entire city of Syracuse, and that would help both propel the business loop and community grid project, as well as provide an alternative means for both through traffic going northbound to alleviate some of the issues we see currently with the interchange exit three at five and 72, as well as provide access to western areas, such as Oswego and Fulton, with the development of the Port Authority up there in Oswego currently. It could be pulled down, you know, depending on the route of it, looking on Google Maps, utilizing I, or the current Route 80 through Tully between Skinny Atlas and Marcellus, and extending out towards between Weedsport and Jordan on I-90. This, this corridor could provide access for the many Finger Lakes regions, and it could also provide additional support for congestion within the city of Syracuse as an alternative to access 81 and I-90 in that area.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I know 90, or excuse me, the exit is definitely very busy. My wife and I, we have a lot of shipments and duet, and I think that that-
Mr. Zarzkowski?
Thank-
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We lost you there for a moment. Let me give you a little extra time so you can finish your thought.
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're all set? Okay. Thank you, sir. The next person to speak is Megan Lee, followed by Jacqueline LaSalle.
Hi, my name is Megan Lee, M E G A N L E E. I strongly support the community grid alternative. The community grid alternative not only meets the needs of the project described in the project documents, but it also right the historical wrong done to the people displaced by the original build of I-81. I am a resident of the town of Gettys. I appreciate the opportunity to share my opinion, yet it is vital that the most attention is paid to the people living directly around the I-81 highway in the city of Syracuse, those whose health, homes, and lives are most impacted by the highway in its current form and who will be most impacted by the changes to come. I would echo the Urban Job Task Force's clear and attainable demands for environmental, racial, and economic justice in the implementation of the community grid alternative. I look forward to someday viewing this chapter in Syracuse's history and knowing that our community made a series of moral choices. Many people participating today have asked for an extended comment period. I would ask that as well, given the magnitude of the decisions being made here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Jacqueline LaSalle. And I would like to remind everyone, as we're reached the end of our list of people who have submitted their names ahead of time, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand using the Zoom app, and we'll make sure that you get the opportunity. So next up is Jacqueline LaSalle.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. So, thank you for the opportunity and for bringing this, this meeting, very important meeting together, and I look forward to the others as well. My name is Jacqueline LaSalle. I'll spell the last name, L A S, like Sam, O N D E. I am a member of the I-81 Project, which is run by Niklu, as well as I am a president of the Greater Syracuse outside Neighborhood Association, in which we are civilly engaged and run a full-service food pantry on the south side. I have not grown up here, but I'm here now six years, and as a south side resident and homeowner, I have many concerns, as many of the residents of the south side do. I am deeply concerned about the business loop, which should not be placed near the Dr. Martin Luther King School. This is not a business. It is a school. The quality of life as regards to air quality is a priority. It has not been during the endurance of this bridge that has gone above this school and Wilson Park above their heads. Traffic should not be a consideration. Respiratory and quality of life and making right the atrocities of the past, this is what the goal should be and should always be. Deadline for comment period should be extended. I agree, at least six months. This community, as well as all other people, but specifically here, we have gone through a lot of things. We are still in COVID, job loss, home loss, and so we need to take all of these things that are in consideration because we are in unprecedented times. Job should be concentrated to the person's most affected before this interstate demolished Ward 15. And now that it will be removed, the city of Syracuse residents, predominantly African Americans, should benefit from this. There needs to be accountability on all these projects, because it is very concerning that there are a lot of comments and the people and the surrounding areas based on-
Thirty seconds.
And yet, we are the ones who made these decisions were made about, so we need to be the ones that are specifically and totally involved. And I thank you for your time, and I look forward to going forward with the project.
Thank you, Ms. LaSalle. That concludes the list of people that we had ahead of time. I'm going to pause for a moment to give the oppor, the moderator an opportunity to see if there's any other people who wish to speak through raising their hand on the app, and we'll be back. And we'll be back in a moment. Courtney Alexander. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if you could hear me before. I see that a couple of people have been added to my list. Next up to speak is Courtney Alexander, followed by Mark Tucker.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm Courtney Alexander. I'm the deputy town supervisor as well as town counselor in the town of Skinny Atlas. And we have some different concerns about this project. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and our board, and and I know Mark will also be speaking as well. We have a request that the final report and EIS that the Federal Highway Administration and the New York State Department of Transportation recently released that identifies the community grid alternative as the project's preferred alternative. Our concerns are for the impact and the increase in interstate trucks entering and exiting Interstate eighty-one at the Homer exit as a shortcut from the thruway to Seneca Falls. This will create an untenable negative impact on our small rural communities and the Skinny Atlas on Skinny Atlas Lake and throughout the Finger Lakes. Skinny Atlas Lake is the source of unfiltered drinking water for over two hundred thousand people in Skinny Atlas, the city of Syracuse, and many surrounding communities. Truck traffic entering and exiting Interstate eighty-one at Homer will travel along these highways on the east and west side of Skinny Atlas Lake that has potential consequences to all these communities and the surrounding towns and villages in central New York. This has not been adequately adequately addressed by the D E I S. We have sent this letter of our concerns on to Rick Markey, the Division Administrator, but I can't communicate enough at the impact that this project will have on the traffic in the surrounding communities in the Finger Lakes. And I I would like to formally request that this be examined thoroughly as the project moves forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Next up to speak is Mr. Tucker.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hey, this is Mark Tucker, town councilor, Scott, town of Skinny Atlas. T U C K E R is the last name. I'm glad we have a chance to listen to all the comments here today. I have to agree with Courtney on what she said about trucks. I mean, we've had this discussion quite a bit. The one thing I always considered with this community grid, if they looked at the pollution. I read these articles that say, well, these highways create pollution through the community for those. But if you're going to start putting in all those traffic lights, are you going to take, how are you going to create a better environment with vehicles idling at those intersections? The other thing was, the other thing I, if this thing is wide like Erie Boulevard, as one guy mentioned earlier, it's still going to keep the place separated down there. And I don't know on the land that you that I hear there's going to be all this land for development. Who's going to get that? Is it going to be the hospitals? Or the university, which don't supply any taxes to the city of Syracuse? Those are some of my concerns. I understand these people have had some unjust down there over the years. But let's not make it worse for them by putting in too many traffic lights or or at least get them timed right or something. I don't know if that's been addressed. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I believe we've reached the end of our speaker list. This hearing will be continued at five o'clock today. So we will go into recess. It will not end. And I want to thank everybody who participated, and I appreciate all of your comments. And I know that the DOT participants are listening carefully and considering everything you have to say.